Thank you this time tonight, commissioners. I'm Bob Stafford. I'm in Life Bridge Drug and Associates, right down on 200 West Broad Street in Elizabeth Town. And we've been open about three months. Our executive director is sitting behind me, Michelle Murphy. We have an office in Lumberton, which is our main office. And we've been open about five years there. In fact, we've recruited people from, consumers from Bladen County come to our Lumberton office. We also have an office in Arne County, which works predominantly with veterans and people in Arne County. And it's about, actually in Spring Lake. So I'm here tonight just to introduce the business and let you all know about it. We met with DSS folks today about 4:30 and had about a 45-minute meeting with them. Thought that went pretty well and answered their questions. Hopefully we can be of some help to folks who have a problem in Bladen County. We'll be the only, as far as we know, we're the only drug and substances provider in Bladen County. And we're attached to East Point MCO as well as Sand Hills MCO, which is located over on the other side where I live in Moore County. So we're glad to be here and we'll be glad to answer any questions y'all may have or provide any information y'all may want to deal with the various departments that we've talked with so far. Mr. Cogdell has been very active in helping us get started here and get our name known. So we're anxious to get going. And as I say, I had a good meeting with DSS today, DSS folks. And we'll be running a good while. We're looking forward to providing services. Thank you. Our executive director, Sheila Murphy, is back here. Y'all might have any questions or she can stand up and be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Bob, and welcome to Bladen County.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Don Melvin?
I'd already dropped off one by the county manager as well as the president. My name is Don Melvin. I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity as a chairman, Mr. Peterson, and Gord, the county manager. I'd just like to address a couple of issues. But before I do, first thing I want to say is I'm nothing but a sinner, saved by a grace of God in Washington, by Jesus Christ, nothing more than nothing. And I'd like to just give you a little short background on me and the reason why I said just what I said is that there's not a boastful bone in my body. I've owned and operated Tar Heel Outdoors since 1978. I'm a part-time professional hunting and fishing guide. I'm a published outdoor writer, published outdoor photographer. At one time, I had a weekly feature in the Federal Observer, Rob Stone in the Blade Journal, Tar Heel Outdoors with Don Melvin. Most recently, I have a commercial truck driver's license. I drive across country, east coast, west coast. One of my most recent jobs is vice president of business development for one of the larger landscaping firms in eastern North Carolina, which is owned by a North Carolina state senator. Also, every two years, I am a particular local state senator's field representative. I'm his lead campaigner. In the past, I've been a county executive with Parkers Energy, North Carolina Natural Gas, Piedmont Natural Gas, Allstate Gas, and again, Cardinal Landscaping, which is owned by a North Carolina state senator. I've been on the board with the Federal Home Wilderness Association. For about 15 years, I was the lead ambassador for the Federal Chamber of Commerce. For those 15 years, I was the lead ambassador with the Sand Hills Chamber of Commerce, which includes Aberdeen, Pinehurst, and Southern Pines in all of Moore County. We actually covered part of Rockingham too. First thing, I want to address two different things. First thing I want to address is a rest. 2008 arrest. I was charged with attempting to discharge a firearm into occupied property, which was supposedly my cousin's. He, again, I'm not naming no names today. He's an alcoholic and a professing atheist. Immediately after I was arrested by the, there was no evidence whatsoever. I was placed under $200,000 bond, even though my record was clean at that time. Immediately after I spent one night in Bladen County Jail, they shipped me off to Dorothy Dick Hospital for evaluation. I was naked in a cell with a quarter-inch mat, urinating and defecating in a corner, had food set under the door to me. I was treated worse than a dog. And in your little handout is an AP report that, where the warden had to step down because investigations showed that inmates were treated in this fashion. Naked, quarter-inch mat, no bathroom facility. But anyway, that was that arrest. I spent two months in Bladen County Jail. They released me. Actually, a girlfriend from Concord borrowed $3,500 and got me an attorney, I believe it was Mr. Wall. They would not allow me to return to my home. I have a private campground. They would not allow me to return to my home for two years while a case was being, before it was taken care of. After two years, they dropped the charges. Also in your handout is where it was dismissed. I'd like to move forward real quickly because I know your time's valuable. October 14th, 2014, I was driving trucks cross-country. I had been on the road 47 days straight. I had seven days off. I rode, I stopped by Richardson and Rushmore on Highway 20 and ran into Herman Dunn. He was involved in the two, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have called his name. I apologize. I ran into someone. I went and parked my truck on my road, on my farm. And within 30 minutes of me returning from 47 straight days cross-country, two Bladen County Sheriff's deputies arrived. I was in a lady's home there on the farm. Again, I'm not going to call her name, but I was in her home. They came to the door. I would not go outside because I'm afraid of the Bladen County Sheriff's Department. They told her to tell me to move my truck off my road. I told them, I told her to tell them I was not going to move my truck off my road. Make a long story short, after about 30 minutes of them back and forth, her going out there and talking to them, I thought they left. I walked out the back door. One of the sheriff deputies was on the end of the trailer. He opened his car door and pulled a gun on me and said that I, I was charged with two felonies, assault on a government official, said that I pointed a gun at him. She was in the yard, she was eyewitness, she saw and told him I did not, I did not point a gun, I did not approach, I did not say anything, I did not attempt to assault or in any way whatsoever this Bladen County Sheriff's deputy. I spent 178 days in solitary confinement for this charge. Again, a loan of $1,500 from a politician, sent to my sister and was hired at Womble. And I had to plea bargain to two misdemeanors, assault on a government official, of a crime I did not commit. I have eyewitness, it didn't matter. I was, I was, I had a choice of plea bargaining and/or standing in jail and waiting for a jury trial. And I've been in jail forever in Bladen County. And that's pretty much all I got to say. Thank you for your time. God bless all of y'all and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I'll be short. I, I'm Kirby Johnson. I'm moving to 70 Road 190 Fayetteville Road in Garland. This is Bladen County, addressing my lifelong Bladen County resident, military service. Before I'm here, I have a water bill when the county expanded water services to outline communities. I found a contract stating that I would hook up to the water system once it got out there. Not knowing the contract, saying that if I didn't hook up to the water, I would still be charged. Well, due to military service, I've been away, but I'm getting ready to move into house presently. And I'm asking for relief from part of the bill or all of the bill due to my military service and not being physically in the home.
Mr. Chairman, he called me and he was saying that while he was in Iraq on tour duty over there, that the bill kept climbing, although it wasn't paid, they added on charges.
Late fees.
Late fees added. I think it came up to $1,100.
Eleven, eleven seventy-eight, exactly.
And he's seeking some relief from that as a military man here in Bladen County.
Did you make any attempt to contact anybody or the department?
I did today. I did today, once I got the bill.
When all this was going on?
No.
Can, we get a copy of that and we'll get back with you, Mr. Martin will follow up with you then. We'll give you the address of Mr. Murray.
Your telephone number, Rocky?
Oh, good.
Yeah, your tele, I can, they can go have that thing. Okay, we'll be in touch with you.
And thank you for your service.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Members, commissioners, and by and by not? I got one thing that I'd like to ask if I could get my fellow commissioners to boil. I'm starting an initiative called the Bladen Resource Center. And it's an initiative that I'm just doing, I'm doing all this hands-on myself and everything, but congruent to set up a service that will provide any type of assistance that's needed to any individual for any type of concern in the county. Whether it be alcohol, opioid addiction, any type of service. And that resource center will just be an outlet as a point of contact, does not, I won't be providing a medical service, but just a point of contact to see if we can do something to eliminate some of the problems going on here in Bladen County. So I'll get some information to you guys on that, what the initiative looks like.
Did you check with Southeast Crossroad? They're doing the same thing?
Yeah, I've checked with them, Mr. Peterson, I talked with the county managers, social services, and DSS, the school system. I've spoken with all those about trying to just make a linkage. It's nothing to do with providing service, just a linkage, so it won't be a breakdown with what service are available here in Bladen County.
Anyone else have anything? Item five, lumber of Council Governor's Dan, Mr. Maynor, Executive Director.
Good evening. I'm here to ask your approval for us to apply on your behalf for money from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. We have operated these programs in the past for you. This is new money. It's part of the $20 million that was given to housing finance as a part of the disaster legislation that was passed. They're going to give it out in $150,000 increments. Anyone that had damage to their home during Hurricane Matthew can apply for the money. You do have to meet income standards, and I think those standards on the handout that you got earlier. So really, what we're asking is just approval from you to go forward to that application. If it is, if you decide to do that, then we'll be back at your next meeting to ask you to approve the policies for that.
Okay, so this A is information and B is approval, right?
Yes, sir.
And let me, before you take action on it, let me tell you one other thing. There is no administration money that's ever tied to housing finance funds. There is a portion of the money, if you had damage from Hurricane Matthew, it has to be at least $5,000 worth of damage, up to $40,000 worth of damage. There is not a deed of trust placed against the property. It's based on a promissory note that's never recorded. But there is no administration funds. In previous applications, you have given us, I think, $10,000 on $150,000 or $200,000. We're asking that you be prepared to match this money with an 8% administration.
What percentage?
Eight. And that is open-ended because we are the COG. If it doesn't cost us that 8% to administer it, we're not going to charge that 8%.
I make a motion, we accept the application.
Thank you. Much obliged, Mr. President, much obliged, Mr. Priest. Any discussion? On favor, say aye. All opposed?
Okay. We'll bring those materials for your approval next time, and we'll go ahead and start the application process so the citizens can begin to apply.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is revenue administration. Ms. Carol Fane, taxpayer.
Hey, good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of Renee Davis, our tax administrator. She's out of town and couldn't be here tonight. So she's asked me to present three items, which are county-owned property, for your consideration, approving the bids on those properties. Item A is in 2016, the county of Bladen were closed on 44 Bryan Road in Bladenboro. The county's expense was $7,499.01. Ronnie McLean has offered a bid on this property, and he did so on 12317. His bid was for $7,500. The administrator is asking the board to accept the bid of $7,500 so that she can move forward with the upset bid process.
Pleasure aboard. Much obliged, Mr. Good, and seconded by Mr. Dallas. Any discussion?
What were those two figures again, the county cost?
County was $7,499.01, and his bid was $7,500.
That's good. All this information was in your board package. On favor, say aye. All opposed? Item B.
Item B, the county of Bladen also foreclosed at 85 Homeroom Drive in Bladenboro in 2016. The county's expense was $10,095.44. Ronnie McLean has offered a bid also on 12317 for $11,400. The administrator is also asking your consideration in accepting the bid for $11,400 so that she can continue with the upset bid process.
My pleasure aboard. Much obliged, Dr. Alfiyamun. Seconded by Mr. Priest. Any discussion? On favor, say aye. All opposed? Item C.
Item C is the county of Bladen closed on a parcel of land at Hemlock Drive in Bladenboro in 2016. The county's expense was $4,397.46. Thomas and Heidi Smith have offered a bid on 2117 for $4,500. And again, the administrator was asking for your consideration in accepting the bid of $4,500 so that she can move forward with the upset bid process.
Much obliged, Mr. Good, seconded by Dr. Alfiyamun. Any discussion? On favor, say aye. Thank you, Ms. Carol. Item sales, Finance Department. Ms. Lisa Coleman, Finance Officer.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. First off, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to address the findings of segregation duties that appeared in the Bladen County audit. And I'm truly sorry that this information was not scheduled to be presented at the, to the association, presented in association with the audit presentation a couple weeks ago. After Mr. Martin and I met with the auditor to discuss the findings on June 30, 2016, and I contacted the LGC to find out information regarding segregation duties. I did talk with Melinda Kennedy, who used to be with the Wake County Finance Department, and she retired from there and went to the LGC. She stated that this finding is in many local government audits due to lack of personnel needed to perform job duties. She said it's not cost-effective to hire someone to sit and watch someone that they may or may not do something. And that's the whole purpose of it. In August of 2012, the board approved a reclassification of an accounting tech to position to an auditing accounting tech to position in our office. And at this time, I'd like for you to meet Tina Clark. She is our accounting tech that has changed over from straight accounting tech to an auditing accounting tech. She holds this position. At this time, Tina began, at that time, Tina began performing random audits with various departments on cash drawer policies. And what that means is she would go and check them to make sure they balance back to our books as far as reconciling from their receipts and their cash in their drawers at that present moment. And right now, we're doing that on a monthly basis. And if time permits and if she sees it, we might go back and do more frequent audits if something arises to her attention. Also, after discussion this year with the auditor, Tina and I have decided, as well as with Mr. Martin and with the auditor, that we're adding the billing, adjustments, appeals, and things of that nature, that anything that somebody could come in to address, we're going to start auditing that. We did recently adopt a, or develop a 10-point checklist for one department that required an annual review of some of their reports. So as time permits with this, we're going to be doing more daily audits to perform this and hopefully eliminate any future findings of segregation duties. Tina, would you like to say anything?
Well, let me speak first. I done a public apology after that audit. Because I did that because when he talks about findings and he puts opportunities there, I didn't understand that. So what we're going to do as commissioners is we're going to have a, we're going to understand this audit before it's brought to the public from now on. But that was the confusion.
And if you have any questions?
Because my background's industry. When you see a finding in the audit, that means that's the first thing you got to fix. And when he's talking about opportunity, you can't, you can't fix all the opportunities in the world. So I publicly apologize again if I was out of line, but I didn't understand his wording. So anybody else got anything to say?
Ms. Chairman, Ms. Coleman, so this implementation that you're talking about now will resolve his findings and?
It will not address everything, but it will give the opportunity for Tina when she's going out to look to see if there's any other opportunities that that person that's doing that particular job may develop in trying to mishandle progressions from the account.
May I speak out loud again, but you're not going to fix all the opportunities. So employees are not, hiring new employees or Tina's job is not going to fix all the opportunities that could arise.
Thank you. I actually, I thank you.
I wanted to say though, as a result though, I think the work that you've done and the other things that you've put in place, so I think it's a good chance.
Thank you, ma'am.
How often will she be visiting the different department?
Oh, she visits too often sometimes. Sometimes it don't feel like she's in the office. But now, with more and more things that's going on that we're adding to, there'll be more and more that she's going to be out of the office. Because there's various departments that have billing, and some departments don't have one person that does the billing, receiving, and everything. So that's the ones we're trying to monitor real close.
Anyone else there in common?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Item B.
Okay, as you know, it's getting close to budget time. And it's time to do our news, our press release that we always do for those commissioners that, well, for public so they can give information back to us as what they would like to see in the budgets or things, just feedback. The three questions, or four questions that's asked is what do you think is the most important priority for the county in 1718? Are there any program services or facilities that you would like to see provided with county funds in 1718? Are there any programs or services provided by the county that you would like to discontinue? And any, any other suggestions they might would like to make? They have to put their name and their address as optional and have this information back to the county manager's office by March 13th. If this is approved by the board, we're asking for a pre-budget hearing to be considered for March the 20th.
So we're going to get this out to the medias and publicize it and do articles. Item C is consider scheduling a pre-budget hearing for 6:30 on Monday, March the 20th. Much obliged aboard. You're meeting anyway.
I just want to clarify a minute, I'll be clear, that that's a public hearing, the department did provide it with the opportunity. If they, for instance, if citizens don't want to complete the survey, they can come in and personally speak with the board this year. We've done that.
Okay, so it should be, consider scheduling a public hearing for pre-budget hearing. Much obliged aboard. Much obliged, Mr. Good, and seconded by Mr. Creed. Any discussion? On favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Item eight is Health and Human Service Agency, Mr. David Howard.
Good evening, Dr. Ross. No action items received in the future updates on, in response to a few requests from commissioners and municipal meetings. Update regarding the kiosk in East Point Services throughout the county. I did provide a one-pager for you on that. So we've only had, actually, two screens on the kiosk. Some of you aren't familiar, this is basically similar to a blood pressure machine in a drug store. So what the kiosk does is provide screenings for people that want to use it. Part of the reason for the low use is probably because we've had a lot of traffic in the clinic, being without a provider, a nurse practitioner over the past eight months. We've got another provider starting in early February, actually, next Monday. So we hope to see that pick up. But also, we're going to put up some signage that East Point's going to provide to us and publicize this a little bit more. It's easy to use, but it's in an office off the lobby, which is the only place we had to put it. So we need to start directing people to that. I will note that the demographics are not collected as part of that service to provide some anonymity. And there weren't any actual requests of treatments made from those two screenings, but they were both through depression. I did dig up a little bit more information on East Point. Bullet requested that we sort of connect a little bit better. I called them and through some back and forth over the past few weeks, I got some data from them on services in the county. So they've got a list of providers in the county, which I provided to you. But one of the real questions is how often are they here? Are they here full-time in the county? And what services are they providing? So on the second page of the handout I gave you, we've got some numbers from them that they provided to me on their services. These are by payer, which is sort of how they run their business. Hopefully in the future, what I'd like to get is by indication, in other words, pressure and subsidies. And also, one of the, some of the feedback I've gotten from Mr. Cogdell and others is that a lot of people who seek treatment end up being referred to a provider out of the county. So that involves transportation, or if they need a higher level of treatment, such as inpatient treatment, they're going to have to go perhaps halfway across the state for that. So they have to leave family and that kind of thing. And also, one of the things we've realized is a lot of providers who contract with East Point, they end up relying quite a bit on the court system for referrals for business as opposed to more preventative work, which is what we're kind of looking for. So catching people before they get into the court system is what we'd like to see more of. And that's some of the information I've found out from them on their services. Any questions about that? I know they're in the middle of.
Item B.
So Mr. Peterson required, when we did the disease report about, about two things, what it looked like for the White Lake situation we had this past summer, but also the CD reports, to get more information on that. I provided you with another one-pager on what occurred over the summer with rashes that people were coming up with while the lake. Also provided you with a line listing, which is the Excel spreadsheet. And it gives a total of, I think it's 86, and 65 individuals reporting rashes. They all occurred in July, in early August. We don't have an actual cause for that. We also had a meeting on the 28th of July, I believe it was, stakeholders. So that included state, folks who manage the lake, who own the lake, the state parks, I believe it is. So this started on July 8th after the fourth weekend. And as you can see, I've provided you a basic timeline of our response, but also some of the work we did to alleviate the situation. Also had a lot of communication with the town, White Lake, and what they're looking to do, because they own the property around the lake, of course, and are responsible for that. The lake itself is. The lake itself is taken care of by the state. They do some basic testing and what they've told us is that, um, the pH of the lake, which may, may, may not cause a problem, but when the pH gets toward neutral, it allows for more plant growth. Historically, it's been more acidic, which deters plant growth. So when you get plant growth, uh, more bacteria growth, uh, more conducive conditions, that might be part of the problem. What we'd like to do is, um, look into some actions that the town is looking into, or is available, water foul feeding and keeping that population down. And, um, nutrition runoff from fertilizer in the Yonk lawns creates a lot of algae bloom and a lot of plant growth in, in lakes. So those are the kinds of things the town can do in partnership with the state and, and public health. Traditionally, we don't get involved unless it's a serious communal disease, but we're involved from a community standpoint because it protects the, the county and the, uh, community out there. Any questions about that, what I provided in the packet or anything?
Adam C.
Right. So the question about the communal disease report that was, um, provided to you about a month ago was a little more detail on some of the top causes. So I've got four slides here, which are top four concerning, um, communal disease. The SCD information is separate, but these, this is Rocky Mountains Spotted Fever. And as you can see, that's gonna peak in the summertime. That's a tick-borne bacterial disease. There are a few different ticks that carry that. Luckily, we don't have many cases, um, but that's when it's gonna peak year to year. And we provided you three years of history. And as you can see, May, June, July, August are pretty much most of the months and a few in September. And then the Lyme cases, the next slide, that's also a tick-borne bacteria. We've only had a couple of cases, which was two thousand sixteen, last summer. And then Salmonella, which is also bacteria, but, uh, when contracted into the giattract, usually associated with, uh, undercooked meat. And a lot of Salmonella, and then the next slide, Campyloa bacteria, that's, um, related to the work we do with restaurant inspections and those kinds of things. Um, that's what, those are the kinds of things we're trying to prevent as far as food handling rules and regulations. And again, with Salmonella, you're gonna see a pickup in the beginning of the school year. And it stays pretty low during the summer. So those are the top four that we're concerned about. Salmonella is really a concern because it happens a lot, um, with undercooked meat. Going back to Hurricane Matthew, when we had a lot of undercooked meat from freezers, that's one reason why the, the state approved the Eastham program, for instance. Trying to get people funded to go get fresh food so they can eat out of a freezer, undercooked food. Any questions about that?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Colonel Nance, Central Operations, Chief Fray, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, the board. The opening of the new, um, counter detention facility is presenting us with a new opportunity. The opportunity being that this being a high-tech facility. Um, and when I say high-tech, it will be equipped with a lot of new electronics, a lot of new operational controls, a lot of new, uh, plumbing controls, HVAC controls, things that we currently do not presently operate anywhere else in the county. This new facility, its internal controls will very closely resemble in technology that which the state is already building across the entire state of North Carolina. Won't be as large in size, obviously, but it will contain a lot of electronics and operational controls that are gonna require a person with the knowledge of these controls, high-tech security controls, um, video equipment controls, operational controls, both from the water and the HVAC, um, that have training beyond our current capabilities, which has led us to consider, um, that we're gonna need to add a person on staff, at least at a part-time level at this point in time, who can be trained in these electronics, who has some knowledge of these types of controls and can be on board as this new facility begins to open. Uh, we feel it's important that this person be on board as quickly as possible as the jail is now entering its final stages of completion to observe the installation of this equipment, to observe the testing and the operation of this equipment. So to us, for operation, we will have somebody at least on staff who has awareness and knowledge of it and know how to troubleshoot this equipment and potentially do, do repairs. Now, we understand when this facility opens, that for the first year, there will be a warranty on the building and on the equipment. But at any given time throughout the night or throughout the day, um, something may go down within that facility that's gonna require an immediate response from my staff. And that will need to be this person who then goes in, takes a look to see if it's something that we need to call in for warranty repair on. The real key to this is gonna be response time. Because with this equipment, controlling doors, door locks, um, passageways, everything related to moving people about the facility, if something goes down, we'll have to go into manual operation mode immediately until things can be repaired or put back in place. And my present experience has been with new buildings, new startups, there are gonna be some little flaws, little glitches along the way that are gonna require somebody there on staff with a knowledge of what's happening to be able to acknowledge at least that we need to get a technician on or in to do the warranty work. So we're requesting that this position, um, be approved immediately and that we be allowed to advertise and hire immediately so that we can get this person on board as the facility is presently on schedule to be opening around the first of May, middle of May. So that is our, our desire, that is our goal. And we put it before you tonight for consideration and ask that you consider allowing us to put this part-time person on staff.
What's the pleasure of the board? Making recommendations. Much obliged, Mr. Fred, much deserved by Mr. Fred, any discussions?
Yes, sir. Uh, one thing, when we, when, uh, we did the tour on the jail facilities, but we were initially getting ready to look at construction of a jail.
Yes, sir.
I observed when we went through that it was like a command center.
Yes, sir.
And it was jailers that ran that center, that operated the doors and the security cameras and from what they, movies, I know in Common County and San Diego. Would our jailers be responsible for the security surveillance and, and ran those doors? Cause that's, that's what they.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's their job.
So this person would be to do what?
Maintenance.
And one of the bricks he said.
With that security system, there will be an electronics control room right off to the side of this, of this command center. And that electronics control room is where all the transaction takes place. When they press a button or they move a lever on that can, control board, it'll activate equipment in that electronics room that then signals a door out in the hallway or a cell door or something of that nature. This person would be the one who knows how that equipment makes that signal transaction and what to do if something in that equipment fails.
And the, the only reason I'm asking the question is I, I look at those individuals that were there at all times.
Yes.
And I'm looking at a person working one thousand hours.
Yes, sir.
Would that be adequate staffing to handle a jail at that size?
We think in the initial stages, yes, sir. At this point, what we would like to do is that as this jail enters its final stages of construction, have them on staff about twenty hours a week, watching the new equipment go in, watching the new equipment be tested. And again, the building's gonna be under a warranty for the first year. So our builder would be responsible for putting somebody in place if we need a repair or we need equipment replaced. After that first year, we probably will have to reevaluate and decide at that point whether this is gonna need to be a full-time person or can continue to be a part-time person.
This will be an evergreen position and this, this jailer just watching those cells will not have the skills to go in there and troubleshoot. This, this is the guy that's gonna go in there and troubleshoot if something fails and it's evergreen and we're starting with a thousand hours, they're not gonna tell employees, who knows? But this is where we're gonna start, wanna start.
That person you were talking about, fit-up position with, uh, where you work, it can't work twenty-four hours, wouldn't have to have three shifts, three people?
If we went to that.
That means three employees.
But what we're proposing at this point is this person be a thousand hours, but be on, available to be on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And that means if something fails tonight at two AM, he'd come out and do what's necessary to get it going again and then he'd go home.
But, but, of course, I'm asking is how would we handle a situation if the individual start running into a lot of problems and need more hours there to be at work?
We'll bring him back to the board to make a decision.
Then we'll readjust and see what.
If it's an evergreen position, we'll bring back this board to make a decision.
I was wondering, I, I know we got to think about.
Yes, ma'am.
With the jail with part-time.
Yes, ma'am.
I know this person, because we're a technology person, basically, somewhat with all the expertise. But are there anyone now at the old, uh, jail that do kind of maintenance for the jail?
We do maintenance with the two staff that we presently have onboard who do all this maintenance for all the buildings throughout the county. Uh, we don't have anything in this old facility that matches the technology that we're looking at in this new facility.
I understand, so would they be trained as well?
Um, initially, no, because they're busy with all the other maintenance of all the other buildings. And, uh, but I do foresee cross-training them with the new person so that they at least have some awareness of what's taking place.
Mr. McClair, you mentioned the requirements that an individual has the, the knowledge requirement. This, this person is gonna be, is already retired, I assume, and you're gonna hire him as a part-timer in another position?
Um, potentially, yes, sir.
So that's, that's a lot of requirements for a job and only give a thousand hours.
Yes, sir.
But we hope we don't, we, we don't need the thousand hours. So that's our hope. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna leave it alone, I'll just, I know we got into a dilemma at one time about employees working in the jails with that one thousand hour criteria. And then the cost factor got to start changing because of the overtime factor with how that person would handle hours and the costs.
Yes, sir.
And the insurance system and everything. And that's the only thing I'm thinking.
I don't.
Would this person, would this person be able to handle other IT problems within the county other than at the jail?
We wouldn't want this person doing the other IT type work. We already have IT staff onboard for the computer technology stuff. We're talking about electronic switches and high-tech switches and controls that I, IT normally doesn't do. This is a person with more of an instrumentation background coming from a construction field that has a knowledge of instrumentation-type work, something very similar to what you see in some of our plants where plant maintenance is going on.
Again, this will be a part-time employee in the beginning and he, and his schedule right now is a thousand hours. And if it needs more, then the, the board will certainly have to decide what they will do as far as maintenance of the jail in the future. But this is what is recommended for the board commissioners to approve tonight to start with. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I've already done a, I already got it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. D.
Thank you.
Item eleven, uh, Health and Human Services, ask the board to table this next week, next month?
We're gonna, Tina.
Do you wish to table?
I'll make a motion.
Second, second by Mr. Priest, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And there's a recommendation to appoint Clarence Williams to the juvenile crime prevention council. Is that right?
C.
I got that. Is that right, Miss Murray? That's the recommendation to the committee.
So.
Much obliged, Mr. Cardell, second by Mr. Priest, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And next, twenty.
Ten, ten long.
I'm gonna ten.
I'm sorry. I was looking for you, see if you'd gone here, I knew you were gonna be a little late. Okay, um, emergency service, Brad, the Killon, Byron Marshall, back with regarding Hurricane Matthew hazard mitigation. Brad?
Yeah, thank you, good evening. Just gonna take a minute and, uh, go through the hazard mitigation program uh, from FEMA. Uh, highlight the, the program and, and the county's responsibilities in this program. I understand we haven't, uh, had a need for this program since Hurricane Floyd. And basically what it is, is about twenty percent of the payouts they made to the disaster victims come back in hazard mitigation funds. And I'll explain more about those funds. But, uh, for this go-around with Hurricane Matthew, we're looking at about a hundred million dollars. And that'll be spread across the fifty counties that were impacted during Hurricane Matthew. Uh, the three areas of the program are acquisition and demolition, meaning, um, if your home was flooded, and I will start out by saying, the only folks that are eligible for this program must have had floodwaters in their homes during Hurricane Matthew. So the first, uh, and certainly the best way to address any future issues is to basically buy the property out, tear the structure down and make it, uh, what they call greenway. Planting grass and that's way, it will remain forever, uh, and it becomes county property of that form. Uh, second, we can elevate, potentially elevate their home. And third, uh, is called mitigation reconstruction, where the house may not be stable enough to raise or to elevate. So these funds would tear the house down and build a house very similar in size. I don't think they can increase their size of their home more than ten percent. Um, and there's some additional type projects with some other monies and, and we will be looking, uh, working with the school system already to identify, uh, generator size that we may need in high schools for our shelters. And we're gonna try to apply for a generator for both high schools under this program. Um, basically the process is, uh, we put out press releases, try to get the public whose homes did flood come to our office um, and make application. Uh, we collect all these applications and then submit them to the state, who in turn will submit them to FEMA on October the tenth of this year. Business owners and homes, you know, residential homes are, are can apply for this program. I think how our businesses, you know, fall a little lower on the priority list, but we wanna make sure people get their homes taken care of. Um, this is a very drawn-out program. You know, we don't even, they don't even turn the, you know, application in the thing until October. So we might be looking this time next year before they start releasing any funds to do any of this. So we're, we're gonna start a major campaign in the media this week, you know, centralization and try to get some information in churches, try to get these folks to call us, come see us, um, you know, let us help you with application. All they can do is say no, so. You'll start seeing that come down the pipe this week. Uh, we've worked with the Ms. Jane and her staff at the council governments and we have some help to get these applications in order for the state. And they will be working out of our office over at White Lake. Any questions?
Brad, you guys want to question?
Yes, sir.
One thing I observed during this hurricane Matthew that was a little, a person lost, two people lost their life. Is there any way that we could find assistance in the county with identifying things that's dangerous, dangerous things like road breaches in the roads? Cause I came across the bridge up here in about ten minutes and then ten minutes later, they were there putting up a, a blockage just to shut the bridge down. And I'm saying that without mitigation, how anything of that nature for road closures and identifying to help us to shut down highways in the county?
I don't think it will, um, other than possibly getting a flood gauge on, um, the South River. It's something that has a need for us. Uh, there's already flood gauges on other areas. But since the hurricane DOT has, I, I think it's doubled their inventory of road closed signs. So hopefully, uh, in the next event, we'll, we'll have plenty to go around. This time, we ran out of road closed signs so quickly, we just couldn't get them all. I think we had a list of seventy-five or a hundred roads on the wall in there before Saturday was over with that were, you know, impacted by water or washed out. And there just wasn't, wasn't enough barricades, wasn't enough high-water signs to, to cover them all. Uh, but they doubled their inventory since the hurricane, is my understanding.
Thank you, Brad.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Item twelve, the fire departments for February the twentieth, Blaken County National Department of Fire Committee, too, and Home and Health and Human Service Agency, provides Council on, that's for February twentieth. Craig Martin, Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to briefly review the calendars with you for the months of February and March. And point out, this Thursday, the night at 7:00 p.m., the Blaken County Fire Association meeting will be held at the Clarkton Fire Department. Next, Monday, the thirteenth, the Board has a special meeting scheduled, and that will be held at the Powell Melvin Building at 5:30 p.m. On Tuesday, at 12:00 noon, the Chamber Monthly Meeting will be held at the Cape Fear Farmers Market. On Friday, the seventeenth, from 11:00 until 2:00, the Elizabeth Town White Lake Chamber will have its Business Expo event at the Cape Fear Vineyard and Winery in the Industrial Park. The Board meets on Monday, the twentieth, at 6:30 p.m. And then later in the month, twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, the NACO Legislative Goals Conference will be held in Washington. Moving over to March, on Thursday, the second, from 8:30 until 4:30, there's a Medicaid convening, it's called a Medicaid convening session, and that will be held by the, or hosted by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and that will be held in Raleigh. And you all are invited to attend that, and we'll coordinate with you to see who may be interested. On Monday, the sixth, at 8:00 a.m., there's a prayer service here. The Board meets that evening at 6:30 p.m. On Thursday, the ninth, at 7:00 p.m., the Blaken County Fire Association meeting will be held at the Dublin Fire Department. And on Monday, the twentieth, at 6:30 p.m., the Board of Commissioners will meet. There are no questions regarding the calendar. Moving, moving on to item B. This is just a matter of information at this meeting, but I did want to share with you that we have had contact from Moffett Nickel, which is the engineering firm doing the design work for the Locken Dam Fishway Passage Project, and they have determined that there are three more tasks that need to be added to the scope of work for this project. One is an alternatives analysis, the second is about, is additional biological monitoring, and then the third is outreach and education to better inform the public about this project. So there is additional cost associated with that. We actually have a conference call scheduled tomorrow to discuss this in further detail. So I'll come back to you at a future meeting regarding this, this matter, and I just wanted to kind of give you heads up and share this information with you, so you could see it and, and read it in plenty of time to ask questions if you have any. Moving on to item C. Mr. Bullock had asked sometime back about an initiative that was started by President Obama called My Brother's Keeper, and this is an initiative that its purpose is to address persistent opportunity gaps that are faced by boys and young men of color, and to help to ensure that all young people can reach their full potential. There are six key milestones associated with the, with the initiative. The first is getting a healthy start and entering school ready to learn. The second is reading at grade level by third grade, which many of you know that's determined, has been determined to be the best indicator of future success, is your ability to read at third grade level. The third is graduating from high school ready for college and a career, completing post-secondary education or training, successfully entering the workforce. And then the last is keeping kids on track and giving them second chances. So I had a conversation with Mr. Bullock last week, and some months ago, we talked with Reverend Hayes, because this, in a sense, is somewhat consistent with the JCPC. That was kind of one of my first thoughts, that may be a good fit for a group that's already organized, but it's really a little bit more specific than the target audience that they deal with. So I, you know, the Board may wish to consider appointing a committee to, to discuss this in further detail, or I just thought I'd share this information with you and try to get some feedback from you.
Great. Just by one of that with school system, why, why isn't that on the school agenda? Why isn't it on our agenda?
Well, it's really, the way I, from the information I read, Mr. Chairman, that's a good question. It's really about having a strong public official to help take a leadership role and to promote it, and then from there, it can channel toward the various areas that may be, may be able to help effect change in this, in the community. That's my understanding.
Has it been presented to the school system?
No, it hasn't.
I brought it here to, as an item to look at. I think mentoring improves an individual's self-confidence. It helps them overall to accept these things, they have better communication skills, their interpersonal skills are improved. And I think once we educate a man, then I think it reduces crime. If you have a crime reduction, that introduces the overall cost to the county. And also, just any, anytime you can improve a person's education, and it improves their ability to pay their taxes or have revenue here in the county. And I think we should take this on as a responsibility to help those that are in need of help.
I don't disagree with anything you said. I personally think it needs to be presented to the school board. I mean, everything you talk about is education. And we're not in the education business, we're in the funding and education business, so that's just, that's my comment. But anyone else want to chime in or got a comment?
Not a man, but I can tell you, there are some black men in the county have taken on this a portion of this issue by mentoring these young men. And they picked up like our former sheriff, some of the business, business leaders. So it will take someone else out of the county, I believe, to at least put a presence.
So what is the role of the Cook County Commissioners going to be?
I mean, also, there are grants out there that you can apply for to have revenue for this program? I've looked that up.
The way I, just from the information I've read, the way I understand it is, it's really to help provide leadership and support and to be a champion.
Well, I understand that, but everything you talk about is education. So I mean, why is it not presented to the Board of Education and see if they're interested in doing it? Because they already have people in place that's doing this supposedly, and then if they don't want it, then maybe it comes back here. But why come to us first when it's education that matters?
And I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to talk about it. I'll be glad to talk about it.
I'm just asking, now, what's the pleasure, the Board?
I'd like to make a statement to the Board of Education, to see what they want to do or how they want to handle that, or see if anything.
If we, is anybody possible to ask the manager to confer with the superintendent, see if they would look into taking them, getting involved with this and taking it into a part of their structure, and then come back and do what they do, maybe we could be a support agent, or we can just support this.
How about you, David?
Okay, Mr. Barnes, I'll take that and report back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Individuals, delegates wishing to address the Commissioners? I entertain a motion to go in closed session according to NCG, Act 143-381186, personnel. So the House made the motion, the Fire Marshal's in the end of session. Make sure you step in closed session. There is, get your little snack, get your little snack before you go.